I'd like to call to order a special governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District on April 8th, 2014. It is 7:04 PM. Do we have members present, please?
Mr. O'Tide.
(noise)
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Akil Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Okay. Could you read us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That is unanimous.
The commission.
Okay. General functions, item one. We have a resolution to adopt, designate April 23rd as Administrative Professionals Day. Have any further information we need on that? Or (laugh).
Mrs. Brizuela, you had a comment you wanted to make on that?
Yeah, I just, I thought, I had gotten some questions today when I was visiting one of the schools, and, as to whether or not this included certificated and classified. And so I thought it would be nice to have someplace on this document classified, the word classified, so there would be no misunderstanding. Because it is, according to Bernie, it is just for classified, right?
So for clarification, you would like it to read classified administrative support for administrative professionals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wherever you think it fits.
Wherever it fits, okay.
Wherever it fits the best.
I could go along with that, that's fine. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No.
We could take a motion to adopt it as...
amend it?
Sure, go ahead.
Want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution 1404-08 Administrative Professional Day and to include the word classified.
Second.
Wherever it fits, okay. We have a second. Well, that is a resolution, so we have a voice vote?
Yes. Mrs. Brizuela.
Aye.
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Mr. Waters.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
And of course, it's a roll call vote, they're all voice votes. Okay.
So, it was Mr. Ali who seconded that motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I'm not used to multitasking at this meeting.
(laugh) Let it be a challenge to you.
Yes.
Know what you mean.
Okay. General functions, item two. 2014-15 AFT Contract Proposal Sunshine and Schedule of Public Hearing. So, this is, is to acknowledge the receipt of the direct sunshining and distribution for public review of the contract proposal from AFT Local 3267. Is there any discussion?
And it's also to set the here, the public hearing date.
The hearing date, right.
On April 23rd.
If there is no discussion, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal for the sunshine and schedule of a public hearing on April the 23rd, 2014, on the AFT Local 3267 contract proposal for 2014-2015 school year.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's also unanimous. And then, item number three. We have the JESD counterproposal to AFT Local 3267. JSD is proposing to reopen negotiations on Article II wages, Article III work year, Article VI health and welfare. And again, we're accepting or recommending sunshining and scheduling the hearing. Any discussion on that? Well, make the motion that we direct sunshining and time to receive public input and schedule the hearing for April 23rd, 2014, for the JESD counterproposal to AFT Local 3267.
I'll second your motion.
Good enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See if we get the whole thing there, make it perfect.
Making it.
Okay.
Putting it public.
And, at this time, then, we would like to convene our special joint meeting with the Personnel Commission members and invite those members to come up and sit at the front tables here. Did we call the phone? Oh, that's a good question.
We didn't vote on the last one.
Did you actually vote on that last one?
No.
I thought we did.
We did not.
Okay, let's vote.
Well, it's just to be sure. I think we have a hanging, hanging motion. All those in favor of the...
Direct sunshining.
The item number three there. We didn't actually vote. So, all those in favor of the direct sunshining, et cetera, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Does that one, does it need a roll call?
No.
No.
It's not a resolution.
This is just...
These are not resolutions, no.
That's why I said, this doesn't require it. Oh, are we missing Alka?
I'm Nita.
Hi.
Hello.
Hey, how you doing?
Mrs. Brizuela.
How's it going?
There she is, Sonia. Over here. Come on up. Look how pretty her top is.
Right on time.
Hi.
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 I noticed that we wouldn't be getting that much.
Oh. Oh, though we can't see it.
I thought we'd be...
Let's have a recess.
That's great.
Okay, then, great. We will have a recess until 7:20, when we're actually scheduled to start this section of the meeting. Because we wouldn't want anybody to miss it who wants to be here. So, I'll see everybody back in their seats at 7:20. 7:00 to 7:20 is a recess.
We also want to be sure that we're recruiting and selecting and going by the system, the merit system rules in order to do that. Part of maintaining an effective classification plan was having this classification study that's coming up done so that it's more current and job descriptions are more current. And, you know, some obvious things like, you know, going by the rules and being fair with what's being done and to try to have a joint meeting with the board like we're doing tonight on an as needed basis. We're really lucky because part of testing for employees is an oral panel and we have a lot of local people who volunteer their time to be on those panels because normally it is someone from outside the district who is part of that, you know, more impartial panel. So Daly City Park and Recreation, San Mateo County Office of Ed, South City Recreation, Pacifica School District, even people from San Francisco Airport come help us out. We have a fair amount of our retirees and even people coming up the peninsula from Woodside. So, that's sort of the highlights. I don't know if there's any questions on the report?
Yes. Can I go?
Go.
So you mentioned that there was professional development for the classified employees in Common Core, state standards. Well, you said they got some information on that. And then English language development. What was different? I mean, was that training any different than the training that the teachers receive?
You know, that's a, that's a good question. I believe they, some of the employees attended the same training when we had workshops on, in October when we do the institute day.
Mm-hmm. All right. And after-school activities for students, what, what kind of training was that?
Right. Well, our ACEs program, you know, the after-school program, Ms. Amiga, who oversees those programs, had a training with Park and Rec, I believe, this year. So there, more, you know, more activities to do and ways to focus students on getting some of their work done and...
All right. Thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Any questions?
Well, no. I mean, it's very much the same like it is. You guys are doing the right thing, so that's good. No, I appreciate that. The only one question I had that, I noticed there's a lot of former employees that come back to sit on the, and has it, is it the same principle that the people on the oral panel should not know the people they're interviewing because...
Well, occasionally...
I remember when I was involved with it, if I went to serve as, on the oral panel, if I knew the person, I had to excuse myself because it could be, look like somebody knew somebody and favoritism. So I just wanted to use, and having former employees, does it, do they ever run into knowing the employee that they're interviewing?
I would think very rarely. And if they do, if they feel they're not impartial, they'd excuse themselves. Occasionally, we have two panels at the same time, so we'd be sure to send that employee to the other panel.
Just so I would ask, because it's more now than before. So I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, we're just lucky that people will come to serve on these. We're really fortunate.
I know.
Georgia Law works really hard, makes a lot of phone calls to set these up.
I just want to make sure the same principle is existing is what I'm...
Right. Impartial, being impartial is really important.
It really is important. Okay. After that, looks great.
Well, then, I just want to thank all of you for what you do on that and all the hard work and Georgia Law as well for the, all the hard work she does on that. And, as I said, just thank you for that service to the district.
I'd also like to recognize Clarinda Lauderdale because she also works in the office and takes care of a lot of good things.
Okay. And that will bring us...
Now, do we, are we supposed to like just accept it or just receive it?
Just for information.
It's just information and discussion.
At a, at a future board meeting, the board will receive the report.
All right.
I think that's how we did it last year.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking that we might want to say we accept it, but, okay.
We accept it.
We'll do it later.
Yep. And that does bring us to item two, which is a report on the classification and compensation study. And this one, I'll just say right, is also for our information and we will be accepting it at a later meeting.
I just thought I'd do a brief introduction on it. So, for two years in the Personnel Commission's budget, we had a classification study listed to be done. And a couple of years ago, you know, funding was still uncertain and you don't want to do a study like this with the compensation part unless you feel there'll be some funds to be able to, you know, go forward with any changes you might need to do or that are suggested to do. So this year, though, we felt pretty confident about the funding, so we went ahead and worked with Mr. Bill Ewing and his firm. And he's done a lot in California and probably outside of California. Locally, recently, he's been working with the high school district here, with South San Francisco, with Berkeley, with San Lorenzo. So it's, you know, something they do well and do frequently. So tonight really is an orientation of the, and you'll get, I know you just received this big binder. It's a lot of information in there and Mr. Ewing's going to go over the process that he used and the results and, you know, try to answer some questions as it may come up. So, but before that, I do want to also thank Clarinda and Georgia because although the Ewings did a lot of the work, they did a lot of the background work to get this ready. So I really appreciate their... Mr. Ewing?
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, members of the commission. Nice to be with you here this evening. I think my purpose in being here is to review our report with you so you know how we arrived at the conclusions that we did and what our recommendations are and that each of the exhibits that we presented here are clear to you in terms of what's being proposed. So I'd like to spend the first few minutes just talking about our, the process used, if that's all right, and then go quickly to the, to the report and walk through the exhibits with you. This study started back in October, November timeframe, as I recall. It seems like longer than that, but that's, that's about what it's been. These studies do take about four or five to six months to do. And we started with orientation sessions where all the classified employees were invited to attend an informational meeting with us. And we reviewed the, the process that was to be used and distributed a questionnaire form to each person. Everybody in the district, every classified employee received a questionnaire. The questionnaire is about nine pages long for the employee. They were given a couple of weeks to complete the form after I kind of introduced the form to them. And then they submitted the full, completed form to their immediate supervisor for review. And that step was just to validate what was in the questionnaire to make sure it was complete and accurate. Employees really don't enjoy those kind of forms very much, but I think your people did a very nice job with, with, with the forms here and I, we were very pleased with the thoroughness and, well, the information that was provided by the questionnaire forms. So after the forms were received by us, then we arranged interviews with people. We interviewed at least one person in every current job classification. We invited anyone whose form we had some question about. And then we also interviewed anyone who requested an interview. We thought that was an important thing to, to offer to people, to be able to talk through what they do in addition to have to write on a questionnaire form. So the interviews, there are quite a number of interviews that we held here, about thirty-some percent of the staff. And following the interviews, then, we put the classification program together. We suggested in some cases some title changes, some reclassifications, consolidation of classes at times. But we presented that back to the district together with the new job descriptions that were prepared based upon what people told us they were doing. And then all that information was released back out to the employees who filled out questionnaires. And those people were given a chance to respond to us. Our job was to say, here's what we think your proper classification should be, and here's what we think is a good description of your work. And then they had the opportunity to say, I agree, or I don't agree, and here's my issues. So some of them had the opportunity to mark up the form. I think we received about twenty separate feedback forms, as we call them. And those forms indicated either agreement or disagreement or some concern with what the language of the class description was indicating. And then after we reviewed that, we got back to each employee in writing saying, here's what our final recommendation will be. So there's been a lot of, I think, good communications here with your classified staff and there's been a lot of opportunity to, to participate. After we completed the classification part of the study, then we moved into the salary part. And so I'll introduce you to that as I go through the exhibits, if that's all right. But I just wanted you to get a feel for what kind of process has been taking place. The report that you have in front of you has made perhaps three outputs that were part of a classification study. The first one is, if you want to take a minute to kind of get there, is called Exhibit A. It's called the allocation listing. And this report indicates all the employees who participated in the study. It indicates to you what their present class title was. And then our proposed classification title is in the far-right column. So this is kind of a roadmap in terms of, of the classification part of the study, in terms of who's in what classification. And you might notice as we go through here, some titles changed. We tried to bring up to date as much as we could the, the class titles, especially in terms of what's going on in the state of California in some of these fields. Notice that on page five or so, there's a whole listing of people who did not complete a questionnaire. And we didn't try to allocate those to any classifications because we have no idea what they're doing. But it's not going to be a difficult matter for your people to allocate them to a class. So each of these employees then had the right to respond to our classification title and to the new job description that was presented. So that's called the allocation listing. And then the next exhibit, if I might move there, which is Exhibit B, just gives you a kind of an alphabetical listing of all the classifications that are now in the classification system. There's not much to do with that except as information. And then Exhibit Three is where the bulk of our work was, and it was updating your job descriptions. I think it's been a very long time since you've done this in the district. Now, what you have in Exhibit C is all of the descriptions which were prepared by our The descriptions were pulled solely out of the, out of the information provided by the questionnaires and the interviews. These descriptions are used quite extensively by merit districts. I'm sure I'm not telling the commission anything new about, about that, but you do a lot in terms of test development, in terms of interview questions for employment purposes that are actually drawn directly from the job description. So it's important to keep these current and accurate. And so the titles that we used here, we believe to be consistent with what's going on in the state of California, like changing the word from personnel specialist to human resources specialist and those kinds of things. So I think you've got all the job descriptions here and read these at your leisure. This is good bedtime reading for you all. But that was the classification part of the study. May I move on to the compensation part? After we prepared the new descriptions and were very clear on what the scope of assignments were to each of the employees, then, then we set about doing the compensation study. And we organized the jobs into families of jobs. And then we selected certain benchmark classifications to actually survey. So what you see as Exhibit D is just an alphabetical listing of the, of the classifications that were actually surveyed. These jobs as benchmarks are meant to be representative of other jobs in their same job family or occupational group. And so the idea is, once we've surveyed, let's say, the food service assistant, then that tells us something about that whole series or that whole job family, about how they stand against the market. So the idea here on the survey and the question that was asked is, is how do our classifications here measure up to what's going on in the marketplace in terms of salaries? The, the goal was to be at the fiftieth percentile at least, right at the median of the market. So we're paying a competitive salary here to be able to attract and retain people. And the first question that we dealt with is, what in the world is our marketplace? And so Exhibit E indicates to you what other districts were selected as, as representative of the market. So the idea here was to stay within other school districts because that's where we'll find the most comparable kinds of classifications. And the idea was to stay within a certain geographic area, right around us here on San Mateo County for the most part, and stay with elementary school districts as comparable districts. So the idea was, let's, let's be as careful as we can to select other districts that are most like us, that are within the same cost of living area here. So you see under Exhibit E that the districts that were surveyed were elementary districts. Burlingame, Belmont, Redwood Shores, Redwood City, San Carlos, San Mateo Foster, Millbrae, San Bruno Park Elementary, and then Jefferson High School. We're doing a study there right now as well. And then Pacifica Elementary School District. So all those districts were surveyed for those benchmark classifications that I shared with you. And we conducted the survey ourselves. And the idea was to take the benchmark classifications, new job descriptions, and go to these nine districts and say, here's our description for a food service assistant. If you have a classification like it, like that, tell us what you call it and tell us what you pay for it. And give us the job description so we can take a look and make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. And so the actual comparison of the descriptions was done by our firm because we wanted to make sure that, that just because we're calling someone an accounting assistant doesn't mean that everybody else does. So we select in the other districts what their closest title was to ours. And then we looked at their job description in comparison to the one we created for you. And the rule of thumb that we use, the standard, is called the rule of eighty. So if eighty percent of the job is a match, then it was a match. That's a federal standard that's used a lot in pay equity kinds of studies. So we did the comparison and, and then, and then identified what the salaries paid to, to those benchmarks were in those nine districts. And are we okay so far? And the results of that are found in Exhibit F. And then Exhibit G, oh, which I'll share with you in just a moment, is a summary of all that. But if you take a look at page one on Exhibit F, please just turn the page to page one where it says account assistant at the top, I can walk you through what these look like. So every page in this exhibit represents one of the benchmarks that I referred to earlier. And this is the one, Page F1, that deals with a classification called account assistant. And so these are in order here from high to low by top step, by maximum. And notice that the participant's classification down the middle, there's a wide variety of titles that are being used out there to describe the same kind of work. But we thought it important for future surveys for you to know what we were comparing this to. So we've identified the survey participant, their current class title. And then if you notice on the right side, that there's a, there's a minimum, these are hourly rates, there's a minimum, which is your Step A, and, and the maximum, that you're paying Step E or F? I've forgotten.
Let me go by one to five here, quick.
Five. It's five. The maximum is five. So, so again, this is an order from high to low based upon the top step. And so as typical around the state of California, we use the top step comparison and compare the median of the top steps to the, your current top step. And if you notice, right in the middle of all that data going down the column called maximum, there's the number twenty-three nineteen. That's the median. That's the middlemost score, not to be confused with the mean, which you all know as the average, right? And this is just the median, the middlemost, fiftieth percentile is sometimes called. So at the very bottom of the page, on the right side, you see in the column called maximum, the median of the max is twenty-three nineteen. And then the next line down is what you're paying in terms of top step, which is twenty-three sixty-two. So on this particular classification, we're paying just a little bit over the median or the median of the market, which doesn't mean anybody's overpaid. It just means it's over the median of the market. So you have a page on each one of these, of the benchmarks that were used. And if that's unclear, I'll move to the Exhibit G, which is a summary of all of this. Are you all at Exhibit G?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the benchmark classification is down the left column, and there is the one we just looked at at the very top called account assistant. Notice the columns, the first one is, is what you're paying the top step, which is twenty-three sixty-two. The next column looking across is the median of the market that we just looked at, twenty-three nineteen. The difference is a positive number, forty-three cents. So you're paying forty-three cents above the market at the median level. Number of participants refers to the number of other districts that had a job like yours. It doesn't refer to how many people we have in the classification. So as you go down the page, though, you see the accountant only had seven out of the nine that had a job like that. ISD refers to insufficient data as you go down there. I think a good way to get a sense for your overall picture is to take a look at that difference column, the third column. And if you just kind of go down that column, anything with a minus in front of it means that you're undermarket by that much. So if you kind of, kind of a sense, this is, this district is paying pretty well. You're paying at or above the median in the majority of cases. And a lot of it's very tight. It's very close to the median, so... When you, we are away from the median, we're pretty far away, like the executive assistant is three, three dollars and sixty-two cents an hour under, undermarket. But a lot of these are very, are very, very close. So this is what I call a good news report for a board especially because there's the cost of implementing something like this in terms of moving salaries up, if you choose to do that, is, is going to be minimal here. That hasn't been the same message we've had for others lately. So are we okay on that exhibit? Okay, that's kind of a bigger picture look at things. And then the last exhibit in your package is the bottom line here, the salary range recommendations. So the question is, what does, what does all this mean in terms of every classification that was developed for you here and written for you? What does that mean in terms of what each classification should be paid in this district? And just, this is organized by family or occupational group? So you see on the first page there, there's clerical, secretarial jobs, and then there's custodial, maintenance and grounds positions, there's fiscal, and it goes on for a few pages. And it lists all the classifications that you saw on that list of current classes. Well, let me tell you how this is, is organized. It's by family, so within each one, there is your current range. So for example, if you look down to administrative assistant, it's currently in range B thirty-four. The next column tells you what the top step is of that range, twenty-three sixty-two. I should put my glasses on here, huh? Here we go. And then the median of the market for that job was twenty-four thirty-eight, which showed that that was a bit undermarket. And so that needs to move to range B thirty-five. That's the next column, as a recommended range. And just for your reference, the top step of that range is twenty-four twenty-one, which is the closest range to that, the median of the market. And the comment section just said it was a benchmark and needed to be placed there.
I'm sorry, could you explain what the, the B thirty-four, B thirty-five, what those...
Oh, that, yeah, sure. That refers to your salary schedule, your current salary schedule?
That's referring to our salary schedule?
Yes. You've got a schedule with A's kind of jobs and B kinds of jobs, yeah.
Got it.
That refers to your schedule. And that's what we use to, to recommend a range as well. The, the concept that we used in slotting the jobs in ranges was to identify first the benchmark in a family and then slot the other classifications around that benchmark. There weren't, we understood the intention was not to cut salaries here, so even if a salary was surveyed to be overmarket, currently paid overmarket, we did not propose that the job be lowered. So just so you know that, that's obviously something that you'd want to decide as a policy matter yourselves, but I think that was the idea going in, and that allows us to get out of town a lot easier. So...
Do I just stay in town?
So if we look, if we look down at the fiscal, you look at the bottom of the first page there, and the very last one in that fiscal family is our account assistant. That's currently in range A thirty-four at twenty-three sixty-two. A survey said twenty-three nineteen, which means we're already paying a little bit overmarket. And so we left the job alone at A, range A thirty-four and did not propose to move it. And it was a benchmark. So that's how to read this exhibit, which is sort of the bottom line. The custodial, maintenance and operations and grounds went up a little bit based upon the benchmark called maintenance technician, because that one moved up one range, so too did the lead person in that category, went up one range. And then the standard that we used for lead over highest level subordinates was a three-range difference. And the closest relationship in the, in a series like a one and two is a five percent or a two-range difference. So there's standards that are explained in your narrative part of the report that'll explain that to you, but I think it was just important that you know what's in here and what, and how to, how to read it. Again, I would say in, with respect to the classifications that we've proposed to you, it's important that, and the reason you're both here, I think, tonight, both groups, is so that you, we all hear the same things. We understand the relation, the responsibilities for the school board is to assign the work to people. It's up to you through your cabinet to make assignments of duties. And so that's part of the job description. And then we understand that the Personnel Commission's responsibility is to, is to take a look at what somebody's doing and making certain that they're in the right classification. So they classify people into these classifications that we establish. And then based upon reading the tasks that the board has assigned, you determine, the commission determines the, the requirements, the skill and requirements for the, each classification. Education and experience requirements, the knowledges and abilities. And then once those are established, then they test according to those criteria. So we understand the, the job descriptions need to go to the board and to the commission. I think when I'm finished, your superintendent or Jan will, somebody will tell you what the next steps would be. With respect to the salary part of the study, the, the commission, we understand it by ED code, has responsibility for the internal relationships of jobs within a family. So that's why we organize the jobs into families of jobs, so you can see what your current relationship is, and then if we've proposed any change, what that is. But we understand the commission is responsible to determine how many ranges apart each classification should be. And then the, the board's responsibility is to put the dollars to those ranges and to establish the district's position with respect to bargaining if this, if that's necessary here. So typically, a district would, from this point, would negotiate any kind of impacts, salary impacts. And so the board would, would be the...